It's to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you to a meeting, the second regular meeting of the month of the Board of Commissioners. Recognize that this meeting is recorded and available for viewing, and I believe it's out live at the moment. So we'll start with awards and recognition. I commend Commissioner Schaefer for formulating our challenge coin program, which is used rather sparingly to honor people who do outstanding things in order to add a more prestige and honor to the award. The first one is in the Office of Assessment and Taxation. The coin recipients are Monica Brashears, Maria Fernalas, and Kim Turard. To the unsung heroes at the front of the phone calls from taxpayers. These ladies are the first to deal with unhappy customer who lost their 3% discount. They are also the ones to tell a homeowner that their property is in foreclosure, or worse, the county will be taking possession in a few days. Their job is not always glamorous, but in the same token, they have shifted the paradigm of tax collection. The words "would you like to make a payment today?" is frequent. "I can take your payment over the phone if you would like" is now common practice. The collaboration with Elections Office in finding additional addresses for return mail has proven effective. As of December 1st, 2021, they have collected 91.89% of the 2021 taxes, which is very high in comparison with past years. From April 20th, 2021 to December 1st, 2021, they have collected $4,238,647.50 in back taxes. We have seen the number of accounts with the linked balances dropping dramatically. Today, I have the pleasure of acknowledging the receipt of these coins from Monica Liz and Chris, and the fact that they have created an absolutely new paradigm in tax collection. So we wish them well for their great job. Either of you would like to add a comment?
Outstanding. Pretty tough to read that.
Yeah, I think I shared with you the complete text of what they've really accomplished. It's just amazing.
Yeah.
Good. A second challenge coin award form from Alisa Mendoza and Alicia Lundgren. The coin recipient is Travis Ward. Travis has been a great asset to the team since he joined almost two years ago. He has been very detail-oriented in his job. Travis ensures that he is thorough with his paperwork and ensures all information is attached as needed. Travis goes above and beyond daily to ensure that he is doing his job to the best of his ability and ensure that all processes are completed. Travis has a great eye for detail when filling out paperwork, getting information from our clients, appointments for COVID, and ensuring our clients are taken care of. Travis does extra research to help with clients to get them information that may not be given out normally or by either Googling information, asking questions, or giving out resources where they can get additional information or help. Travis multitasks in going from our Fennelton office and Hermiston office without missing a beat and keeps up with all the information that he can to provide great customer service. Travis has been a blessing to our team and will be missed when he moves on to his new adventures that life has brought him. That's from Alisa Mendoza and Alicia Lundgren. Congratulations to Travis.
Congratulations. I think it's gonna be tough losing you.
Yeah. Any other recognitions, awards, or comments from the Commissioners?
None for me.
None for me.
All right. We'll move on to minutes of previous meetings. This is December 1st, 2021.
Move for approval.
Say it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Do you have any additions to the agenda?
I tried, but I couldn't find anymore.
Let us go with the 19.
Keep it wide.
On my land, the 20 we already have.
The file.
All right. Is there any public input from people who are not otherwise interested in a specific agenda item? All right, we'll move on to the items. Number one is a dispatch assessment contract.
I will leave it up to Sheriff Rowan to speak to this, but before he does, I do want to add that this has been a long process, and I really want to thank Captain Primmer and Sheriff Rowan for going through this effort. After sitting through my first dispatch negotiations with the stakeholders, I think this is a very needed process, and again, I just thank them both. But I'll turn it over to Sheriff Rowan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. This was actually discussed here a few weeks ago. We were able to find two different companies that can perform the requested assessment. And through Captain Primmer and from my assessment of the bios on the two different companies, Chris Fisher came out ahead, not only because of her lengthy time and experience in dispatch centers, but also the costs associated. I believe she quoted about $23,000 to get the project completed. The other company quoted just under $50,000. And so I would ask that we be allowed to go ahead and move forward. And I know that there was some conversation on where the funding could come from. We do have a dispatch reserve fund that's set aside to take care of computers, you know, if we have to replace computers and other equipment in the dispatch center, or take care of the shared need type materials. I think it might be appropriate to take it from there.
I, if there's nothing else, I would move for approval. There was $25,000 involved in this. We'd like to move forward as quickly as possible.
I second that. It's the commission that it comes out of the dispatch reserve fund, because I think the pinky actually says the general fund.
You have a comment? On favor say aye.
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 Okay. Second item is Sheriff's Office purchase.
I think that's ours.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. This is Captain Dave Williamson with the Sheriff's Office. We're seeking approval to purchase ammunition from Dooley Enterprises, who is our normal ammunition vendor. We find that we get the best prices there. We're looking to buy ammunition in the amount of $12,293.46. That's ammunition for all divisions, not just patrol, but for everybody that utilizes firearms in their day-to-day. And we anticipate this amount will carry us through to the end of the...
Is it in the fiscal year? Is that something that's...
I think it was when I asked him about it.
This is duty ammo. Forgot to mention that, but this is both practice and duty ammunition.
Real quick question. Is this gonna last through the fiscal year or the calendar year?
Our expectation is that it will last through the end of this fiscal year, and it is budgeted for and planned for.
Please, thank you. I would move for approval of the $12,939,293.46 for the purchase of ammunition.
What was, did you say 900?
$12,293.46.
Okay. Say it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is the software purchase also in Sheriff's Office? Right. That's our next item.
Yeah. Yes. The software, we requested and received a quote from Sunridge to write a program to interface the jail in custody software program with the Oregon Department of Human Services to automatically generate a report in order to be in compliance with House Bill 2107, which is to make sure that there's no overpayment of public benefits. I'm requesting the approval of the purchase, $8,800.
Move for approval of Sunridge software from Sunridge Systems in the amount of $8,800. Say it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Carol, are you here for items 10 and 11? This is the season of gratitude, and we certainly express our gratitude for the many things you do all year round, but particularly at the Christmas season. So we will jump to item 10.
Thank you, Commissioners. Bob is not able to attend today, so I am here. You should have a pinky in front of you. The first one, I believe, is State Line. And State Line, it has an application in front of the Oregon Department of Energy for a repower project. We have submitted some information to the state having to do with our local code and requirements that are applied directly by the state instead of a project coming directly to us. Again, we have a draft order at this time, proposed order, and we are responding to that. And as a participating agency, the board is the one that this information comes through. Staff generates a lot of these comments, of course, and then presents them to the board to further those to the state. So that's what's before you at this point.
After reviewing the comments, the pinkies, and the information, and also having those discussions with next chair and others, I would move for the approval of the comments related to State Line Wind Project RF-86.
Say it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You have a second item.
The second item is a solar project. This is a project also that is going to be processed through EFSEC. It is what's called an expediated process through EFSEC, which means because it's under 100 megawatts, the applicant has the ability to request this expediated review. It's more or less a fast track, even though I don't know if anything's fast with EFSEC. But again, this is, this project is between Hermiston and Stanfield. It would be to the southeast of Hermiston, kind of off of, what is it, Edwards Road there? Dan, you probably know better than I.
Yeah.
And anyway, it is, this is our initial response to the state with the standards of approval that should be applied for land use. And that's what the letter that's attached to the pinky today pretty much is expressing to the state.
The, I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
First is, the way I understand this, this is different than the last approval that we did, that all we're doing here is kind of authorizing questions more than authorizing the comments.
Right. This is telling the state, these are applicable standards. This is what needs to be applied to the project. We will have more opportunities as far as comments. We don't have a draft order at this time. It's just a preliminary application to the state.
And then the second part of this one, and again, I understand, and I'm not that naive, but doing this at 324 acres basically keeps them one acre under going to a larger sighting application.
Actually, it's based on high value. If it's over 160 acres of high value, which this is, and this is due to the fact that it's within a agricultural area.
Right.
And that makes this project have to go to the state rather than go locally.
Okay. So I would thank you for bringing that, because I was under the impression that 325 acres was another threshold.
No, 160 in this particular instance.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Thanks, Rachel. Move for...
Carol.
Or Carol, I'm sorry. I'm looking at too many. I apologize. I move for approval of the presentation of the comments and questions, even until the county planning.
Say it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything else, Carol?
That's it?
Carol, I apologize.
No, no problem.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Fennel, for jumping ahead. When you learn to make fudge, as well as Carol, we'll review the lines.
You should come in.
All right.
And as long as I don't refer to him as Tom Roberts, we'll be all right.
Yeah, okay. You're up.
Wow, I never saw that coming, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fennel's Public Works Director for the county. Before you today, we're requesting permission to purchase a CAT 966M loader. Historically, this has been a loader that's been associated with our rock crushing. We have leased these loaders for a number of cycles, always on a five-year cycle. This particular loader, we're coming at the end of the five-year lease cycle, and what we're proposing is to just purchase the contract outright, given the market right now, what's going on, the fact that this loader is a low iron loader and should service well for years yet. The buyout on this loader is $225,126.57, and our intent would be to run this for a number of years and then look at replacement down the road when we win the market and things ease up a little bit in this equipment market.
I would move for approval of authorized payoff in 966 CAT 966M front-end loader for the purchase price of $225,126.57.
Say it.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Joe, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me? Okay?
You have one, two, three, four, at least four items. So proceed.
All right. So Joe Fumar, Public Health Director, Yumital County. The first item before you is a invoice for our accreditation annual service fee. It's in the amount of $5,600. This is the annual fee that's based on our population of our county, is how they calculate it, for continuation in our process for becoming accredited. That process has stalled a little through the pandemic, but we are excited and ready to refocus our efforts and move forward and finish the process and become fully accredited moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, approval for a payment of $5,600 for the accreditation service fee.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Second item.
The second item...
Public health contract.
Yeah, let me get it in front of me here.
I'm looking to.
So this is a contract with Elkhorn Media to continue and our education efforts that we've been doing throughout the pandemic. This would be a contract through the rest of this fiscal year, getting us on radio and social media platforms and other services that they're providing. Our intention is to not have this focus solely on COVID education. That will be a large component, but we're actually looking to branch out into our other prevention programs and start to weave those educational messages back in, much like we used to do before, but maybe in a more proactive manner than we were used to. We've got more of a presence in the media, and we want to continue that.
Thanks, Jim. Just going with the thing today.
Joe.
I wondered if you guys were gonna pay attention.
I was paying attention.
Joe, I got one quick question. So is this, will this, the lead on this, will this be your new CIO officer or PR person that kind of takes the lead on this type of information?
Yeah, that's the Joel who will really help coordinate this, so that, you know, really, the plan behind this is as things change and focuses shift month to month, we can increase advertisements in certain program areas, up or down, based on different factors. One example being, you know, in November is often the Great American Smokeout for, you know, tobacco cessation push, you know. And so activities like that, we would increase our messaging around our tobacco awareness during that timeframe. And having somebody to manage that really gives us the ability to be more proactive and responsive.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move approval for the payment of Elkhorn Media in the amount of $4,150 per month from December through June of 2022.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is CLO, CLO, Joe.
Yeah. So the Conference of Local Health Officials is an active group that we participate in on a regular basis. They meet at least monthly. The dues recently increased slightly from before. They are again based on population. The amount for us for this coming year is $5,069.24, and I, before the board, because of the amounts, and we would like to continue paying and continue being a part. I think it's important to note that at CLO is where we have the opportunity to really provide a lot of feedback and decision-making into at least some of the processes that the state puts down.
Mr. Chair, I move to payment of the CLO dues in the amount of $5,069.24.
Second.
I just want to comment before we vote that Joe has gone out of his way to be an active member and a participant in CLO, and I think we're seeing a reflection of that effort in the amount of things in which we're involved, the amount of resources coming to us, and certainly the benefits of his participation on a statewide basis. So proceed to vote. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, workforce retention and recruitment.
Oh, I think I have one more. Sorry.
Yeah.
Is it three creation of positions?
So before you is a request to create three full-time Range 23 positions in my department. These are positions that will be supported not by the general fund. One of them is in our prevention program, where in addition to our tobacco and opioid prevention work, we've recently been a recipient of an OHSU Knight Cancer Grant to work on better access for individuals for cervical cancer screening. The other two positions are funded out of, partially funded out of local funds we're receiving from the legislature for modernization investment, for public health modernization activities, as well as some regional funds to assist folks in a regional partnership with modernization activities.
I think this is very timely, actually, especially knowing it's grant-funded, not general fund, especially the piece about the opioid education piece. That is, you know, we're seeing a rise in opioid use in our county, especially like fentanyl is starting to really be really popular. So, Mr. Chair, I have approval.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, item number 12, post-employment retirement request.
We have number nine, workforce retention.
Which is also a part of some...
Joe's doing.
Workforce retention recruitment.
Is that yours, Joe?
Yes, it's part of his.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, registered nurses.
Joe, go ahead. Oh, I see. Okay.
So the, I mean, there's a piece of it that's me, and there's a piece of it that's not. For my piece of it, we would like to institute limited duration sign-on bonuses for some of the positions we've had trouble filling, specifically our RN positions, our nurse practitioner positions, and our certified medical assistant position for the school-based health center. The other portion is we are receiving some, we have received or are starting to receive some funds for workforce development retention that are original generation out of the federal package that was passed, and then passed through OHA down to public health departments. And we would like to be able to apply those funds to the requisite staff as appropriate.
The other side of that, I believe, is for the DA.
That is correct, right. It's also for incentivizing recruitment for the deputy district attorneys, and that would be as well as the ones that are post for public health.
Is DA Kremis there?
I don't believe so. I think this is probably coming mostly from Human Resources as well.
Counsel, do you want to speak to it, or just...
Basically, it's echoing the same situation that has been held having in public health. The county has various openings right now for district deputy attorneys, and we're hoping that with a signing bonus, we might be able to stand up from the crowd of the other ones that are also looking for, to fill their vacancies. And so it is also requested that the board authorize a signing bonus for the district attorney's office for deputy positions. And what is being requested, there are two different actions being requested. One is to incentivize recruitment efforts, and then the second one is for public health alone for their workforce development funds for utilization and retention.
Well, I have seen the benefits of the signing bonus of the Sheriff's Office and what they're able to recruit and the caliber of deputies that we're able to retain with that. So I would make a motion to approve the incentivized recruitment efforts from the district attorney's office.
Second.
Well, I also am aware that in public health, there's a lot we'd like to be able to do more, including vaccination sites and so forth, but we simply aren't able to because we do not have the staff to do so. I also know that we're in a dangerous position with respect to our ability to charge and prosecute in the DA's office based on the law, so I'm very supportive too. So on favor say aye.
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 And then I'll make a motion to utilize, the utilization of public health workforce development funds for staff retention efforts in the public health.
Second.
On favor say aye.
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 And then just for clarification, you might want to have a separate motion then for the signing bonuses for public health.
Oh, sorry. I thought that was in there.
That was technically part of one, but if you want to go ahead and just make a separate motion...
Oh, I think there's two different motions, or two actions.
Right. There were two actions. The first one normally included both the district attorney and the public health.
Oh.
For the bonus.
With that being said, I'd make a motion that we approve incentivized recruitment efforts for public health as well.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Now we are down to item 12, post-retirement hiring.
And this is also coming before you from Human Resources. It is part of the policy for retaining retirees as a temporary special employees. Each year, the employee has to request, along with their manager, to extend the temporarily relationship, excuse me. And so it's before, there are three employees that have been impacted, the requests have been received by Human Resources, along with any necessary manager approvals. And so what's being requested is to allow them to continue employment through 2022.
26?
We only do one item here at a time.
Oh. I move to approve employment of first retires as temporary special employees under the restrictions of personnel policy 4.7 with benefits of salary consistent with current position for 2022. And with that, I'll go with...
Are you suggesting they be permanently indentured?
I'll sign the motion.
I want to make a comment that I really enjoyed the conversation we had at the staff meeting with all the staff that... meeting with all the staff that kind of filled me in on some background on the statutes and the information involved in this. It's a little more complicated and at the same time very simple, but it, the information and the background is as important as the information that's up front to us right now. So anyway, that's all I have.
Well, I appreciate your willingness to do this.
Right.
Critical people. All right, I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Robert, you have the next portion of discussion.
Was the DA unavailable?
Good morning, Commissioners, Robert Paul, CFO. I'm here to request several supplemental budgets and I'll give you a summary of them.
This is a public hearing.
Oh, sorry, we're going to hearing mode, sorry.
Thank you.
So before you this morning, Budget Order 2022-08, Sheriff's Special Projects Fund, the Emergency Management Grants Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in state revenue of $86,632, an increase in transfers in of $10,000, a decrease in materials and services of $25,500, a decrease in capital outlay of $57,582, and an increase in contingency of $9,450. Budget Order 2022-11, Economic Development Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in federal revenue of $100,000 and an increase in materials and services of $100,000. Budget Order 2022-12, the 2050 Plan for the Central Water Project Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $2 million and an increase in materials and services of $2 million. Budget Order 2022-13, Economic Development, the Economic Development Reserve requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $100,000 and an increase in materials and services of $100,000. Budget Order 2022-14.
That's not the same $100,000.
No. Budget Order 2022-14, Facilities Reserve requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of budget, requires an increase in transfers in of $500,000 and an increase in capital outlay of $500,000. Budget Order 2022-15, Public Works requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $2 million and an increase in contingency of $2 million. Budget Order 2022-16, General County requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of $10,000 and a decrease in contingency of $10,000. Budget Order 2022-17, General Fund, Communicable Disease Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $1,100,000, an increase in personnel services of $500,000, and an increase in materials of $600,000, materials and services of $600,000. Budget Order 2022-18, General Fund, the Health Department requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in federal revenue of $40,000 and an increase in materials and services of $40,000. Budget Order 2022-19, Parks Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $150,000 and an increase of in contingency of $150,000. Budget Order 2022-20, Human Services, the SE 63 Peer Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $214,000, a decrease in personnel services of $260,000, an increase in materials and services of $503,000, and a decrease in contingency of $29,000. Budget Order 2022-21, Human Services, the SE 66 Treatment Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $76,000, a decrease in personnel services of $177,000, an increase in materials and services of $408,000, and a decrease in contingency of $155,000. Budget Order 2022-22, Human Services, SE 66 IDPF Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $14,000, a decrease in personnel services of $10,000, and an increase in materials and services of $24,000. Budget Order 2022-23, Human Services, SE 80 Gambling Prevention requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $22,000 and an increase in materials and services of $22,000. Budget Order 2022-24, Human Services, 2145 Alcohol and Mental Health Tax Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $12,000, a decrease in personnel services of $12,000, an increase in materials and services of $116,000, and a decrease in contingency of $96,000, $92,000. Budget Order 2022-25, Human Services, School-Based Mental Health Center Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $35,000, a decrease in personnel services of $13,000, and an increase in materials and services of $48,000. Budget Order 2022-29, Assessment and Taxation requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $50,000, an increase in local revenue of $250,000, and an increase in materials and services of $300,000. Budget Order 2022-31, Capital Purchases Management Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $100,000, an increase in transfers in of $140,000, and an increase in capital outlay of $240,000. Those are the supplemental budgets before you.
All right, questions of Robert?
None for me.
None.
All right, we'll go out of hearing mode and into deliberation. Any deliberations that you wish to make before we start through the process of motions? Any comments from the public? Okay. Anybody else I have to ask, counsel? There's nobody here. All right, how do you want to do these gentlemen?
I can make the motion, you all make the seconds.
I'll make the second, while you're alone.
There we go, okay. Mr. Chair, I have an approval of Budget Order 2022-09.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
I think you meant 08, sorry.
08, I think.
09 is transferred.
Yeah, that'll be in a little bit.
Oh, I went the wrong way. My apologies. Let's skip ahead.
It had me going.
Yeah, 08 is what I meant to say in my motion, the second, so.
All right, you accept it?
Yes.
Okay, we've already voted.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I have an approval of Budget Order 2022-11.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of 2022-12.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-13.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-14.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-15.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-16.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-17.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-18.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-19.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-20.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-21.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-22.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-23.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-24.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-25.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-29.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-31.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Now we're at the budget transfers.
Yes, Commissioners, there are, I think there are five, no, six transfers. There are six budget transfers, I'll summarize them for you. Budget Order 2022-09, Board of Commissioners, requires a transfer appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $250,000 and a decrease in contingency of $250,000. Budget Order 2022-10, Records Archiving requires a transfer appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $15,000 and a decrease in capital outlay of $15,000. Budget Order 2022-26, Human Services, A&amp;D Gambling Services requires a transfer appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in personnel services, $307,000, an increase in materials and services of $338,000, and a decrease in capital outlay, a decrease in contingency of $11,000. I'm guessing there's, or there's a missing number there somewhere.
Should be 27, 28.
Public Works.
Wellness Hubs.
Excuse me.
Public Works, if you have it.
I think it's up on the screen, Robert, if that helps you.
Well, if it's up on the screen, that's what I'm reading. So there should be a decrease in capital outlay, but I need a little...
Do you want me to refresh? Was this updated? Let me, let me refresh and see.
I don't think it's there, but you can try that.
Which order is this?
2020, 27, Public Works.
27, it was a decrease in contingency.
That's, okay.
It's an $150,000 difference.
Yeah, we have 27.
Yeah, so it's the one before it.
Oh.
26 is Human Services.
26.
Gambling, A&amp;D and gambling. Is that a figure?
Just one second, make sure I get this right.
Right. You know what, I don't think there is 20.
So you go from 9, 10, and then all the way to 26.
It's not there. It's 6.
Did I go down on this one?
So it's not the Public Works?
Oh yeah, that's right.
No, no, it's Human Services A.D., it's program 54, 87.
There's not an order there for it.
There isn't?
Records are private.
Oh, you don't have one?
No.
Just 10.
Trying to find out what happened.
Oh, okay, and then the order itself is 27 is Public Works versus 26.
2022-26 is what we're looking at.
You're short, aren't you?
Yeah, that's what you just read, isn't it?
Yeah, that's got, so, so what it should read is there should be a decrease in capital outlay of $20,000 in it. It's not on, it's not on that sheet there.
Does it have a number?
It's 20, you do not have one. I misjudged it.
It's 2022-26. So are we not doing that today?
We're doing it, it's just that I overlooked it. But it was a decrease in capital outlay of 20,000.
Yeah. Excuse me for that.
20,000.
I will go ahead and do that and get it.
Okay, shall I continue then?
Yeah, you can go ahead and act on it, you don't have that to sign yet.
The next one, Budget Order 2022-27, Public Works, requires a transfer appropriation not for funding not known at the adoption of the budget, and it requires an increase in transfers out of $150,000 and a decrease in contingency of $150,000. The Budget Order 2022-28, Wellness Hubs, requires a transfer appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $100,000 and a decrease in contingency of $100,000. And finally, Budget Order 2022-30, Local Improvement Distribution. This requires a transfer appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in transfers out of $140,000 and a decrease in contingency of $140,000. After that, do you have questions?
Just real quick, the local improvement, is that part of the community development?
Yes, yes, it's, it's, so it's where local improvement payments and actually payments from tax abatement programs funnel through to be used in other parts of...
I just hadn't heard who was up. Thank you.
Ready? Questions? Any further questions? Make sure you're all right. All right, ready to proceed?
Mr. Chair, approval of Budget Order 2022-09.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Move approval for Budget Order 2022-10.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-26.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-27.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye.
Move approval of Budget Order 2022-28.
Second.
Fair to say aye?
Aye.
And move approval of Budget Order 2022-30.
Second.
I'm fair to say aye?
Aye. Do we need to go back and have one more approval?
No, he...
Just get it included in the language?
He'll just need to write it over so you can...
Gotcha.
One thing I would like to add, you probably noticed there were a number of budget adjustments for the Human Services Program, and that is a result of the fact that CCS is now handling those, those functions, and so that changed, changed the distribution of our budget, and so had, we had to, had to make some rather large adjustments there to make that work.
I was waiting for that one. I knew it was coming.
Anything else?
Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is the Woke Depredation Committee Appointment.
I would move to adopt Order Number BCC 2021-079 and comment on second. Second. I, I'd like to thank Tim Hawkins for agreeing to sit on this committee. This, last year at this time, or in January and February, when I first started on this committee, it was kind of a, not routine, but the approval of funds was, was pretty well documented. This last year's wolves have put this committee under some little higher spotlight, especially with some of the statewide vision and views of the wolf depredation and the depredation of livestock throughout, throughout Eastern Oregon, but especially in New Matilla County this year. So again, I, I'd like to thank Tim for volunteering to participate in this committee. It's an expedited new schedule this year, and we have to have the early work done by the end of December and then our follow-up work in January, so it's about three months. The new statute speeds that up by about three months, so.
Would you like to comment on the purpose of the opening?
Yeah, sadly, yeah. I, I, we had a very active member, Randy Sevier, obviously, he's no longer with us, and I would like to thank him and give that personally to his family, that the time and effort that he put into this committee was extremely important. His addition to the committee, his input in the committee, and his passion for the committee were more than well received. He was a voice that, voice of reason, respect, and the... He was a, uh, voice that, uh, voice of reason, respect, and the, uh, ability to help all of us come to, to conclusions each, each, on each event. It's gonna be sorely missed, that's for sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Donahue. On fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number sixteen is, is the contract for land and water consulting.
So I would make a motion that we approve the contract with Cook's Land and Water Consulting, and I'll make comments after, second.
Second.
Uh, I've been working very closely with Jared Cook, uh, on the Central Water Project, and he is proving to be invaluable to this project and I'm looking forward to working with him in the future.
Other comment?
Can't, I endorse it, that's for sure.
Yeah, on fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Say nice things about him, he's not here, so.
Better. I'll say.
He already did that.
Uh, property transfer. BCC oh, two oh two one, day zero seventy-eight, council.
Okay, what's before the board is a formal approval to purchase property. Uh, this property was identified as potentially replacing the facility, um, that was known as a maintenance shop across the street. Um, rather than build a new facility, um, this property was identified as being a Jason's Cart House with a building that is in fairly usable condition for our uses. And so what's before the board is to authorize, um, the purchase of the property. Um, and along with the, um, the seller will retain a portion of it until June, uh, fifth to allow, um, the property owner to remove some personal property from it.
You said June first, right?
June first.
Okay, I said the fifth.
Yeah, June first, uh, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to adopt BCC twenty twenty-one dash zero seven.
I would second that, uh, quick comments. Um, the one thing that, that, uh, I think people need to understand is that we're not purchasing the Taj Mahal, but, uh, that, that it's a very usable space for, for our needs and that I think the Pendleton, people of Pendleton and, and visitors to Pendleton should also be aware that in the early discussions of picking this piece of property up, that there was a commitment to make sure that, uh, the outside, um, got the same attention as something as, as our old maintenance shop and make sure that it's a asset to the community in the area of town.
I also want to acknowledge for, for the minutes, as a matter of record, uh, that Commissioner Schaefer will be directly overseeing renovations to this property uh, with the assistance of our CFO. Do you have a motion?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we're there.
Okay, on fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. The Echo Community Benefit Plan. There we are. Do you want me to speak to that? All right, the, the Echo Community Benefit Plan has recommended funding for the grants for the Community Benefit Plan for twenty twenty-one, which primarily amounts to a, uh, an allocation of ten thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars to the Echo Fire Department. So, uh, I would move that we approve that.
Second. Yeah.
On fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The Adams Community Benefit Plan.
What, what we're doing here is, is, um, confirming the memberships, uh, of the, uh, members of the Adams City, our Community Development Fund. Uh, let's talk to each of them, uh, they're willing. The one, the one application that isn't, um, available right now is from Nextera, and they will be supplying a name for that position. Let me. The names, and there are some new names. Graham, so the members, uh, would be Graham Alderson, Jeff Rose, Jeffrey Rose, Amos Bechtel, and myself, and then the, uh, the, uh, Nextera position when it becomes available.
Okay.
Was there a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
On fair say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The, uh, final item on the agenda is, uh, a discussion of, uh, opening the county offices, uh, including the courthouse. Right now, they have restricted public access to appointment only. The proposal has been put forward to reopen the county offices to the public as of January third, two thousand and twenty-two. The matters before the board were discussed and possible action. Comments?
Yeah, I, I'll go ahead and, and, um, move for approval for a second comments.
I'll second it.
The, the reason I, I brought this forward is, uh, several people have asked me why, why the county isn't open. Uh, cities in, in the, uh, county are open, have access with masking. Um, state offices are in the process of opening up the first of January. And I, I can't come up with a good, a good answer at all. Um, I think that, uh, the county has worked really, really hard, um, over the past years to establish a customer-oriented attitude and to be able to, um, address the needs of, of all of our, uh, constituents and on unrestricted basis. I think we've all learned how to, uh, wear masks inside and the ability to, um, negotiate what, what mandates are left at the state level. And I, my, my desire is, um, to get the, get the county open and, and running, um, on a nor, more normalized basis.
I think one of the most compelling arguments is the fact that the state offices will be open and almost everybody else is. I think we've made adequate provisions, uh, internally for the health and safety of our employees. Um, I, I strongly believe in, in making the courthouse accessible to the public, and I assume the level of security that currently exists will remain in place as it is.
I, I a hundred percent agree there, agree, there is no reason to, um, diminish the security at all, especially since the two main, uh, county buildings, the, this building, uh, in Pendleton and the one in Stafford Hensel are staffed, uh, by security. Um, and there is a, a pretty tight channel on, on traversing the areas.
So I've got a couple of questions on that. My first question is, what happens with community corrections and CDDP where they're under state mandates? I realize the states can lift mandates the first of the year, but does that include community corrections and DDP? And if not, will we be able to remain those in their current condition?
I, I would see, I, I would, I would not see why we wouldn't other than those buildings are leased to the state, but, um, I, otherwise, I, I would, I would err, I would err on the, uh, customer side, our constituents.
But are we referencing how community corrections and DDP currently operate?
Yes.
Where you, when you come in and, and, you know you're in the door, right?
Please.
Well, I think if there are any state restrictions on the program, so it's a happy remain in place because that's the state's restrictions, not the county's. So this will, to the extent that the county applies, then yes, it will be. If there is some more restrictive one from the state, then that would still remain in effect. But I don't know if community corrections, um, does anything from the state that requires their offices to be closed.
I'll do that with that available, I don't know if there was, but maybe not.
Yeah, I, I think both of those are more county, as far as whether they're open or not. Um, but there might be some restrictions on, uh, some other aspects of the programs that the state would still be in place.
But we're not proposing to change how they're currently operated, are we?
Well, I don't know, that's what my question is.
I mean, when you go into community corrections.
Well, for instance, you can't go into DDP right now. Cause it's locked, the door's locked.
Okay, so we're not talking about community corrections?
Well, I was lumping them both in the same, same category, but maybe we want to break one apart and then let's just talk to DDP.
Well, when you go into community corrections right now, don't you go in the door and then there is, uh, a counter?
Correct. But I didn't know if.
So there's not free access beyond the counter?
No, not to go back in the office, there's not.
Okay.
But DDP is one that the public cannot even get to the door unless you have an appointment, kind of like how we're operating right now, so.
Is that pre-COVID, was it that?
No, pre-COVID, you could walk in. Uh, and, and she's following, she being, uh, Kim Beck is following the state guidelines on that.
Okay.
So that's where my question comes up, cause it does reference all county buildings.
Can we break that into two motions?
Well, I, I think the county building itself might be open for juvenile. I mean, there's two programs in there, so I don't know if we can separate them.
You go to get up there, and also.
Are they manning the desk out front?
Um, yes and no. Not, not all the time, no. So.
I guess what you could do is add that they'll be open to the extent, um, for county purposes unless otherwise, um, required by state to remain closed or restricted.
My other question is, and I, and I realize that you mentioned the fact that we've all learned how to wear masks, but I, I argue that, walking to Walmart. So, uh, if you see fifty percent mask use, I'll be surprised. Um, that being said, I'm not a big fan of the mask mandate, don't get me wrong. But that being said, we are a government building, and we kind of have to follow the rules set by the state. And if, in that scenario, if the public is allowed to wander throughout the halls, who polices the masks in the hallways? Cause that would be a security feature, cause they'll get the doors.
Well, if they're not notified, I think that security would be the first, first line to, to have that done. If, if somebody was walking down the hall and I saw him without a mask, I would ask them to return to security for instructions.
I just don't want to put our, our staff in a position where they have to be the mask police.
Oh, I don't, I don't, yeah, I agree. I, I just say you refer these people right back to, to security.
And so the staff would have to tell people to go to security?
Right.
See, I'm not comfortable with that, I don't think our staff should have to take on that burden.
What about if the staff refuses to serve them without a mask?
Well, there are already been that scenario. But, cause now they're, you know, we're not, we're not saying you can't come into the courthouse, you just have to have an appointment, and at that point, they're walking in with somebody, they're having a mask on, if they don't have a mask on, they're not allowed to build. But when they're not escorted in the building, what's stopping them from taking off the mask in the hallway? That's where I'm at.
I, 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 I understand the question a hundred percent. I, I'm not big on managing for exceptions, and, and I, I think that those will be exceptions that we can be, can be addressed. Um, I don't, I don't want to put the employees in that same deposition no more than anybody else. And I, I also know that this hallway to the security is not that far for, for the use of security.
Sure, but third floor is quite a ways away, so.
Are we having, I mean, they, they have access now.
Yeah, they're not shut down, they're not restricted from being at the courthouse at all right now. They're, they just have to have an appointment.
Yeah, they're not allowed in the building, so they're closed, we're closed unless you have an appointment.
Right, so there's no loitering in hallways. This, this would allow people to loiter in the hallways and take their masks off and lock up and down the halls. And that's what my question is.
Well, I, it, again, I think that's why we have security for one reason. I know that it's, it, it's primarily for courts, I don't, I understand that. But they are our security also.
I would, could we, could I make a friendly, uh, addition to your motion that says that the staff will not have to be the mask, enforce the mask?
I have no problem at all with that.
I, I, we, we continue to, to make it clear at the, at the front desk that masks are required everywhere in the building. And there are, there are facilities now, where I go into now, where, where there actually are signs at various places around the building that said masks are required everywhere in this facility.
Walmart has those signs, but people don't listen to them, so that's, that's my, that's my point.
Yeah, that's the, again, I, I think this is a government building, it's recognized and is a government building, and I, and I think we're managing for the exceptions. Now, with that said, down at the NFR, you could go into Thomas and Mack and nobody had a mask on. But if you went into South Point, everybody had a mask on, you had to have a mask and it was monitored.
Sure, that, that state doesn't have a state mandate for indoor masks.
It does, and it's controlled by the counties.
They're one of the, they're one of the six, I think they were.
Yeah, they're all controlled, the state doesn't, it's all, the state gave, mandated the counties. It's a strange law. I challenged it while I was down there, got, got educated.
I agree with Commissioner Schaefer's comment about not making the staff mask police, but I think we can put up the, the reminders throughout the building that masks must be worn at all times.
I, I have no, I have no problem with that. Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Um.
Just remember the security also is county staff. So if you see county staff, unless it's part of their job.
Good catch, Doug.
So, yeah, that's a good point.
I, I would, if the amendment, uh, excluded security, courthouse security from the, from the amendment, I'm good.
Makes sense to just assign enforcement to security rather than excluding people from enforcement, just assign enforcement to security.
That allows offices to enforce it if they want to. That does allow offices to enforce it if they want to. You want that option.
Well, we don't ask the staff to draw a gun on intruders either. I mean, I think there's a lot of things that are expected and demanded of security that aren't, not demanded of the remainder of the staff in the building. But we could certainly make a provision that, that security is responsible for, um, enforcing all mandates. Is that all right? That excludes the staff.
I'm, I'm okay with that, I just don't, like I said, I don't want our staff to be in a position where they have to feel like they need to tell the member about, put a mask on.
So, so let me read this back then. So the courthouses will be open with the exception of, um, masking with the enforcement of masking strictly by courthouse security.
My other question about, you just said courthouse, so no other county building.
Or county building security.
Is that?
Right, I, you want, I mean, there are some staff members that would really like to probably enforce it as well.
Right, I thought.
I don't think you want to exclude them to say that.
That's probably true.
The enforcement is assigned to, uh, courthouse security, however.
How, however do you think it should be best for?
Well, you're saying, but staff members will not be required.
They're not.
To enforce the mask.
There you go.
Requirement, but, but are free to do so if they choose?
I just don't want somebody to feel like they're, they must enforce it if they're not comfortable doing so.
No, I agree with you, but there, there probably will be certain staff members in certain offices who.
Sure.
Are more than happy to say, put your mask on.
I mean, uh, I, I just bought in at records, I mean, their door's been open for some time now.
So does that include opening all the doors in the hallway then again? There's a lot of questions for me, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay, if, what, I, I, I am saying to me, since I, I don't, I don't know what pre-COVID was.
I think the only door right now that's closed that would have been opened in the past is planning.
Yeah, I, I think.
I think you're right. Okay.
And they have a counter and, and a method to isolate too.
Yeah, I, well, I, I personally do not like the office doors closed, but wouldn't have been on that road before. But I think planning is the public service office. The others that are closed are internal service offices and not public service offices. So. Okay. Any other comments, revisions, concerns?
I'm gonna have to have that with us. Please.
We're in the window.
Yeah, I've got a paragraph I want to know.
All right, we'll spend some time together.
I think another provision would be have, have, uh, Melinda work with legal counsel to clarify what we just did and are doing.
Doesn't it really apply to everything you do?
I heard that, Doug. I don't care if you mumbled it or not. And, uh, you're actually a hundred percent right.
I think that's part of our job.
All right, other comments? We'll proceed to vote. Compris say aye.
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 That was, that was energetic, John.
So I will not call for naysay. I think I heard three, three ayes, did I not?
Regurgingly, yes.
Very good. Other comments from commissioners?
Had those in my life, too.
Well, you don't get the, get back.
None, none from me, I'm bad.
Do know that I intend to write a, a letter to the, uh, board of commissioners in Graves County expressing our, our concerns and condolences. They suffered about eighty percent of the damage. And they're now being, I mean, there's a lot of stuff about them, um, coming out from Naco, but I would write them a lot of.
I, I think you said that you've visited there before, but that, that county, if you've been there, is very much like Umatilla County. It has the mountains, the flats, the rivers, and different population centers. Um, not as.
Not the size of Yonk Gally, actually.
It is, but, but it is spread out and, uh.
Is there any place you haven't been?
Just around the.
Which one of the stuff?
You know. It is, it is, if you ever get a chance to, to visit, um, it's, it's beautiful country.
I've avoided for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, any other comments from commissioners?
None from me.
All right, thank you all.